Good evening. Thanks again for everyone's patience. Took us just a little while to get three extra people, but we got it. And we're good now. So I appreciate you guys coming out tonight. We know that this is a little unusual for the town of Carver. We don't have too many special town meetings. But this is an unusual year, and therefore dictated that we do so. My name is Sean Clancy. If you don't know me, I am the town moderator. It's my honor and privilege to welcome you guys all here to this special town meeting. Please note that there are portable listening devices available at request. Please simply raise your hand and we'll get one for you. Also, we have portable microphones for those who are unable to approach the microphones in the aisles. Simply, again, raise your hand during debate and someone will approach you with one of those portable microphones and we will sanitize those between uses. Please be mindful of the fact that everyone in every town department and committee has been working extra hard during this crisis, as are all of you in this room, I'm sure. Please bear with us if everything's not perfect. I know that everybody worked tirelessly to put these items together so that we could bring them before you and let the town meeting process do what it does, which is give you a voice. Due to the ongoing pandemic, we kindly ask you to sit and remain seated at least six feet apart from anyone who's not a member of your household. We also kindly ask that you wear a mask when at least six feet of social distancing is not possible to protect yourselves and others. All registered voters who are residents of the town of Carver are asked to sit in the seats in the front here. And if you're not a resident of the town of Carver, we ask that you sit in the left-hand rear button, my left-hand rear box, your right-hand rear box, in the back there. Tonight's proceedings are being recorded by Area 58 cable television, are taking place in the Carver Middle High School auditorium and Genesee, sorry, and not the Genesee, that was last time, at 60 South Meadow Road in Carver, Massachusetts. A special thanks to Mike Shaw and his team, the folks at Area 58 and their team for putting this all together. Dave Seatonthoff, who's always working to scramble to get everything all set up with his team as well, too. Out of respect and courtesy for our proceedings, please silence your cell phones or set them to vibrate. At this point, Town Clerk Kara DeHill has advised me that we do have a quorum of at least probably just 75 qualified voters. And I therefore declare that a quorum being present, this special town meeting will be called to order at 7:12 PM on Thursday, October 15, 2020. All who are able, please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we're gonna remain standing as we observe a moment of silence for all the public servants we've lost in the past years, or since the last meeting anyways, as well as those in town who may be affected by the COVID-19 crisis. Pledge allegiance?
To the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands on its nation, on its God, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. We're gonna try to keep this up. Thank you. We're gonna try to keep this meeting as brief as possible. We know you guys are all very busy and you want to get home to your families and loved ones. And so we'll try to keep things moving along, but I do want to introduce everybody up here for you, just in case you have not had the opportunity to meet these fine individuals or have seen them before. So certainly, first, we have Mr. Scott Neef, who is the superintendent of Carver Public Schools. We have Mr. Andy Carterelli, who is our school committee chair. And Mr. Carterelli, would you mind introducing the other members of your committee?
Certainly. Stephanie Clority is my vice chair to my right, Jason Greenwood and Jennifer Pratt are my fellow committee members, and we have one who couldn't make it today, James O'Brien. He had something going on at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carterelli. And over here in the middle on my right, I have Ms. Sarah Hewens, who is the chair of the select board. Ms. Hewens, would you please introduce the other members of your board?
Thank you. To my right, we have Jen Bogart and Jim Hoffman. And to my left, the far end, we have Mark Townsend and Bob Bellman.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. Over here on my left, Mr. Richard LaFond, who is our interim town administrator. We have Mr. Greg Corbo, who is our town council. We have Ms. Kara DeHill, our town clerk. Somewhere around here is Ms. Lemay, our finance director. Oh, there she is, down there. Sorry. Let's see. Mr. Alan Germaine is the chairman of our finance committee. And Mr. Germaine, would you mind introducing other members of your committee?
Good evening. To my right is Adam Holmes, Beth Selger. Way down there is Marie Zwigman, Bill Duggan, Pat Caneely, and our newest member, Bill Cullen.
Excellent. Thank you. So thanks again for joining us tonight. We do have some important business that we must conduct this evening in order to meet some hard deadlines. We find ourselves in unfortunate situations of having to adjust budgets and things like that, so we appreciate everybody's help in kind of getting these things done. I also want to point out, you just heard from a lot of members of our town boards and committees, if you feel compelled to get involved, there's many ways, including being appointed to one of the many openings we have on town boards and committees, so please contact Kara DeHill, the town clerk, for a listing of openings if you're interested in doing so. With that said, I kindly ask you to use tonight's meeting as an opportunity to listen intently to the various proposals brought forth by boards and committees who have spent tireless hours preparing tonight's business for your consideration. Please be respectful of the points of view of our elected officials, town employees, volunteer committee members, and of course, your neighbors seated in the room. I'm convinced everybody is here for the same reason and has this town's best interest in mind. Keep in mind that this is a town meeting, it was not a Facebook group. There are rules we follow, which are detailed in the bylaws, town meeting time and Robert's Rules of Orders, which help us steer this meeting in a civil manner. At no point will that many inappropriate behaviors that we see on social media be tolerated in this room. While we may sometimes think we know precisely what the motives of another individual are, we should not draw conclusions based on hearsay or limited evidence. Keep in mind, this is not a court of law. So just please be kind and, you know, use your best judgment in conducting yourself this evening. On the way in, you were provided some paperwork, was mainly just the warrant, so it was a little bit lighter reading than would be usual for an annual town meeting. So you have in front of you the business that will be conducted this evening. Basically, as is done at annual town meetings, we've provided each article on the warrant. There's a title for the article. There's an explanation of what that article is about. There's an informational summary, which gives you kind of the Cliff Notes version of what we're trying to do. And there's a proposed motion, along with what vote is required in order for that motion to pass, and also recommendations from the select board and any supporting committee involved in that article as well, too. The proposed motion is there to help you get the ball rolling, so if you'd like to make the motion, that's what we recommend, is using that motion. Of course, you're well within your rights to pose it however you'd like to. There are some rules. I'll introduce each article by reading its caption and ask for a motion and second before providing an opportunity for the sponsor or sponsors of the article to provide a brief presentation on the article. If you are presenting or you feel you may be answering questions on an article, I ask that you please sit near the front, so that you're readily available. Only motions and amendments which are directly relative to the article at hand will be in order. Any motion or amendment which is fundamentally different from the open article may be deemed out of order in the moderator's discretion. As many of you know, we are required per town by law to publish the warrant seven days prior to town meeting for the purpose of allowing residents to decide whether they have any interest in debating and voting on the business laid forth, limiting debate to the business on the warrant is meant to protect the rights of those who have chosen not to be here this evening. Once a motion has been made and seconded, and only after a motion has been made and seconded, we may begin presentations and then debate. Any voters welcome to speak and debate. Simply approach one of the microphones in the aisles, wait to be recognized by the moderator, state your name and address, and then make your statement. To the circumstances, I please ask that only one person stand behind the microphone at any given time. Once that person is seated, another may approach. I will attempt to recognize people in the order they have approached the microphone. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes per microphone appearance and two opportunities to speak on each motion. I will not recognize someone for a second opportunity to speak and debate until everyone that wishes to speak a first time has had an opportunity to do so. Legitimate questions which are not statements poses questions will be considered exceptions. The gizmo you see in front of me is a timer, which I will start when each speaker begins to speak. It will start with a green light, change to yellow when you have 30 seconds left, and red when time has run out. All debates be conducted through the moderator. You should not speak directly to or with other members of town meetings. This is a really important one that we miss sometimes, so keep that in mind. This is not an opportunity for you to have a conversation with the other individuals within the room, so please pose all of your debate to me and through me. Those town officials and committee members who are seated in front of you will observe the same rules as those seated in the audience when speaking and debate, including utilizing the microphones in the aisle if they are able. We actually probably won't do that tonight. We didn't do that at the last town meeting for the folks seated up front, just so there's not a lot of movement and whatnot with the circumstances, so that's fine. In the interest of time when speaking and debate, please be sure to state points of view and information not previously provided or questions not previously asked. A lot of you may have been watching the coverage of the hearings on TV lately, and there's a lot of repetition of points and things like that, so that we definitely don't need here tonight. We're all capable of kind of hearing that point and kind of moving on to the next one. When the motion is put to vote, that will be your opportunity to show your support for or against that motion. Please refrain from applauding or booing. If at any time you feel that I've made a procedural error, the proper course of action is to rise to a point of order. Simply rise and state point of order. You should try not to interrupt someone while they are speaking and debate unless allowing them to continue would in your estimation cause a furthering of procedural error. Otherwise, respectfully wait for them to finish before making your point of order. I will then recognize you, allow you to state your point of order, and then rule on it. After debate has been exhausted, I will put the question to a vote. Alternatively, any town, any member of town meeting may make a motion to move the previous question, which after being seconded and approved by a two-thirds vote will end debate and put the question to vote. I will not recognize such a motion unless debate has become repetitive and no new information is being presented. Articles will be taken up in the order they are listed on the warrant unless a motion to advance an article or postpone an article has been made, seconded and approved by a two-thirds vote. I'm not sure, I don't think we have any out-of-town presenters today, but we always like to say that during the course of proceedings, we may have individuals who are not from Carver. So unless I hear any objections right now, I'll let those individuals speak. And has become our custom in the past, and in the interest of time, if there are no objections now, I will waive the reading of the warrant. Seeing no objections, we will waive the reading of the warrant. At least a portion of each article, so I will read the title of each article, and then I will let you know what the vote is required to pass the article and the recommendations, but otherwise, we won't read through all the details. So without further ado, let's get started. Oh, we've got a point of vote already.
Can you, if anybody's sitting in the back row up there, if they're gonna want to vote, you're gonna want to sit in the front area here to be counted?
That's a good point, just so we don't think you're from out of town. That's good. So the folks sitting in that back corner there, you guys are all from out of town? Good. All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bellman. All right, so Article One is the fiscal year 2021 revised operating budget for the town. This requires a two-thirds vote to pass. The recommendation by the select board was four, zero, one, and the finance committee, did you not vote on it?
Six to zero.
Six to zero.
Unanimous tonight.
All right. Very nice. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article One as set forth in the warrant.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. We have a short presentation by Mr. LaFond.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, this is very short. As you can see by the warrants, if you look at Part One, it references the need to reduce our levy, raise an appropriate amount rather, by a little bit over $1 million. And the reason for that is because, well, we understand it's the revenue situation due to the pandemic, but it's a little bit more than that. One of the big issues we have right now is our new growth with regard to our solar development. The major reason there is we had multiple projects that were intended to be online this fiscal year, and they're not going to be online till next fiscal year, so revenue projected simply isn't going to be available after all. So that was not necessarily related to the current state of affairs. Estimated receipts and meals tax have taken a hit. Once again, I'm sure everybody's aware of why. And we do have some issue with cherry sheet assessments with regard to charter school tuition, and it's more of a timing issue, and Mr., you know, Mr. Neef can speak to that if anybody is specifically interested. And I, there we go. Okay. So some of the budget adjustments that were, I'm sorry, I mentioned solar development, new growth. The problem with solar development, new growth, is that is divided into multiple categories. One of those, a third of that goes to the debt reserve for the middle school, high school project that was intended to be, I guess, some money we'd be putting away for future use. Part of that is a reserve to fund long-term obligations, and the other is to go into our debt and stabilization fund. The fact that we won't be getting those funds this year means that we won't be able to expend those funds either. Other local receipts, and if you really want tremendous detail, Meg can do that, but I think everybody would be aware that motor vehicle excise has taken somewhat of a hit, our licenses and permits and fees. Those are all very much related to the pandemic and the economics thereof. So the budget adjustments that we have, that we're putting forth, that make up that one, approximately $1 million, we really, we have no budget adjustments to the operating budgets of any departments, so that's the good news. What we had to do was take some of the targeted reserves, as I mentioned, primarily from solar, and essentially reduce the levy by, or the raise an appropriate amount by that. And in doing so, we haven't really recognized much of an impact to our budget, but it does mean that we won't be able to use those funds to put away for OPEB, as well as to fund some of our capital items. As some of you may be aware, the operating budget transfers funds to the capital debt stabilization fund, and from that, it's actually transferred out to fund capital items. So when it's not working on the revenue end, it doesn't work on the back end with regard to funding our capital projects. One other way we're closing the gap, as you can see, reduced by about $700,000, a townwide shared budget, and we are using $220,000 in stabilization reserves to help plug the rest of that gap. Obviously, that means FY '22 is going to be more of a challenge, but when you consider some of these one-time, some of these recurring revenues that are off a bit this year, we hope that that's, that we'll be able to make up that shortfall next year and hopefully even replace some of the funds in our stabilization account. And this actually moves into the Article Two, but I think it helps to explain this also, is one of the ways that we're reducing the raise an appropriate amount is by backing off how much goes into the capital debt stabilization fund. As I mentioned, that funds our capital improvements and capital articles. And in Article Two, you'll see that there's a request of the town to reduce the capital article that was approved at the annual town meeting by these two pieces, replacement of school buses and the library arch. Those amount to about $200,000. And that's by reducing, by canceling those capital expenditures that have already been approved, it actually makes, the first piece makes the budget work. So there's an interconnectedness between the budget and the capital budget. And I see the glaze there. Is any questions? And I will say, I very much appreciate the school administration and Mr. Germaine and the committee. Mr. Germaine came in and sat down with us for a long time and butted heads a bit so we could come up with a compromise that, that are between the schools and everyone else, we could all coalesce around. And that's the nicest thing I'm gonna say all night, Mr. Moderator.
All right, excellent. Well, we'll now open the floor for debate. Seeing no motion to the mics, we'll put it to a vote. So on Article One, fiscal year 2021 revised operating budget for the town, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes by two-thirds vote, or unanimously, sorry. Okay, Article Two, capital improvement budget. This requires a majority vote. The recommendation from the select board was five, zero, and Mr. Germaine, the finance committee?
Unanimous, six, zero.
Unanimous. Very good. We'll open this one up for debate. I don't think we have any presentations on this one.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article Two as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, and now we'll open it for debate.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I just want to reiterate what Rick said. We did sit down and we put the boxing gloves on, and thank you very much, Scott. This was, there was a lot of pain involved in putting these numbers together, and this was a real big deal, because as you know, I was opposed to the school buses at the June town meeting. But I'm very grateful that they sought to remove them pending this board's approval.
Mr. Germaine, can you speak a little closer to the mic?
I can. Whoa. Just, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate what you did, Scott. This was a big deal for us, and I think it had the school meet us halfway. Originally, we were looking for a $220,000 plus this additional $185, and obviously, this, doing this reduces it, so the 220 became the number instead of the four-something that it originally was. So I just want to say thanks.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to acknowledge that I'm not a resident of the town of Carver or a registered voter in Carver. I know you acknowledged that in the beginning, but just want to acknowledge that. And, you know, I just want, I'll thank the finance committee and also Rick and Meg. I think that, you know, we all worked well together in terms of coming up, was, were trying to find solutions to the budget crisis we faced this year, and I appreciate working cooperatively with all the members of the town, as I know the school committee does as well. And I can't speak for the board of selectmen, but I assume that everybody feels the same way, so I just like to thank everybody for their cooperation, and it was, it was a positive experience of us all working well together.
Thank you, gentlemen. Seeing no further motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. Again, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article Three is unpaid bills from previous years. This requires a nine-tenths vote, a little unusual. The select board voted five, zero, and the finance committee?
Six, zero.
Six, zero. Very good. So, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $1,455.30 from the finance committee reserve fund in order to pay the bills of prior fiscal years as set forth in Article Three of the warrant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Now open the floor for debate. Seeing no motion to the mics, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article Four, close out the elementary school project. This requires a majority vote. The select board voted four to one, and finance committee?
Six, zero.
Very good. So, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article Four as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, these votes by the FinCon were tonight at our meeting, and we only had six members, so when I say six, zero, it was everybody that was present.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, we've got, down here on the right?
All right, I just want to take time to explain my vote. When I saw this come before me, I see, wow, $422,000 left over from the school project. Awesome, let's try to get that back to the taxpayers, so we're not paying that extra bit on our tax bill for so long. I didn't want it to be a keep the change situation. We said you could have this, keep the change. So I was told that can't happen, it has to go to other capital projects. I asked for more information about it. I just got more information this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to research it and flesh it all out, so that very well could be the case. I want it to be clear to any skeptics, I 7,000% support the police station, you know who I'm talking to. I want to see it go forward, but I was just looking to try to get this back to the taxpayers because it's leftover money from something we had voted to support. That's all.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Bellman.
Kind of goes with my coworker here. Can we get a rationale of why it has to go through to another capital project? Please, thank you. It was actually a resident that questioned me about this also, so the public understands why. Thank you.
Mr. LaFond?
No, I would actually defer to Meg. Meg had provided us with that information previously. I don't have that specific information in front of me, but I will, I'm sure Meg is thrilled to fill us in.
Ms. Lemay?
So to be clear, once, if this vote goes through, that $422,000 is no longer deemed to be debt excluded. It can no longer be added. Let me back up. A debt exclusion, when a vote is taken, is that the debt is, it is added to the tax levy. With this vote, if it passes, that will no longer be debt excluded, which means it will not be added to the tax levy. It will have to be, the debt will have to be raised, as we've already borrowed the money, but it will be through the regular appropriation process. It is not added to tax bills. So we'll start with that. But in terms of a capital project fund, the idea normally is that you, you short-term borrow, and then when the project is completely long-term borrow. The idea being is that you don't want a balance left over at the end of the project. And against all expectations, the elementary school did come in under budget, so that's why there were funds left over at the end of the project. And according to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, when a capital projects fund is complete, if there is a balance less than $50,000, it can be used to pay down the debt. This has a balance of more than $50,000, which means that the town meeting can vote to use for any purpose for which a loan may be authorized for an equal or longer period of time than that for which the original loan, including temporary debt, was issued. So that's saying that if the balance is over $50,000, it has to be used for another project that would require a borrowing of the same period or longer. So, I mean, so then you have, so basically, it's not going to be added to tax bills, and Mass. General Laws is saying that it has to go towards another capital project.
Thank you. Mr. Harriman?
Bill Harriman, you're on a roll, and I don't want to slow you down, but I just want to make the point that this money has been planned on for the completion of the police station. This will finalize the police station. You want me, see me standing up here again asking for money for this project anyway, maybe for something else. That police station is due to be finished the first week of March, so our police department should be moving in that, that week. It's going to be an incredible new facility for your police department. I know they appreciate it. I appreciate your support along the way. We've taken a rather circuitous route to get to this point, but we are here. So let's finish it up, and thank you for your vote if you choose to vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Harriman. Yes, sir.
John Carter, 24 John Spahn Road. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Can we just have a total number of what the police station will cost when it, once it's
Mr. Harriman?
Yes, I do. With the, the vote-
With the, the vote of this appropriation tonight, it will be $9,517,062.52. And that will be the final number.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? John Gasky, 162 Plymouth Street. With regards to the, the funds having to go to capital, other capital projects, whether, what other capital projects were considered for this? Because one in particular, funds have already been redirected to the police station. I'm referring to the Plymouth Street Water Pipeline. Money like this could refund that and get us back on target.
Anyone want to field that question?
Point of order, I believe that project's been funded again. Am I wrong, Meg?
Nothing has come back, nothing has come up for a town meeting as far as funding the North, North Carver.
I believe the water project is funded.
I could just, number one, we, in terms of other projects, we have a 10-year capital plan, so there's many, many projects. I think with regard to the Plymouth Street Water Project, we are under consent order with DEP. So within a certain period of time, we actually have to be, have, you know, permits ultimately out to bid and ultimately beginning a, a capital project. The town has no option but to fund that. So, so to the extent that anybody may be concerned that their funds may not be available, whether that's a capital, whether it's a borrowing through the district or a borrowing through the town, it has to be funded. So I wouldn't have any, if I were you, I don't have any concerns about whether or not there's going to be enough funds for that project. So they're kind of, they're kind of separate. So, I hope that is...
I bring it up, I bring it up because it's already been delayed once. It was supposed to have been, it was supposed to have already been completed, and, and here we are, we haven't even started yet.
All I can say is that the town has certain timelines that we're under pursuant to a consent order with DEP. So if you have that consent order, I'd be happy to get that to you, but the timeframes are outlined specifically. So the town, the town doesn't have a choice in terms of meeting the guidelines that we are, that we have agreed to with DEP. I guess I'm very happy to, if you don't have that information, if you, I don't have it with me at the moment, but I'm happy to provide it to you if you see me after the meeting.
Thank you. Seeing no further motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. So on closing out the elementary school project, this does require a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes by majority vote. Moving on to Article Number Five, an article to amend the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District Agreement as approved by the, I'm just going to leave that to you guys, committee. And we've got several pages here, because the whole thing is detailed here. But this does require a majority vote. The recommendation from the select board was two to three. Do I have a motion?
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, we just had a...
Could you speak into the microphone?
We just had a resident walk out. Are we still in the corner?
Yes.
We had more than 75?
Yes, we have 85.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Sorry.
And actually, I forgot, I think, oh, nope, never mind. We don't have any presentations on this one, right?
I do have a few slides, right? And I do, I, some, so basically, I want to point out what a yes...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, do we have a motion?
Well, we can do a presentation, well, yeah, let's do, let's do a motion. We have a motion on Article Five?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now we'll take a presentation.
Yes, I'm just going to briefly point out, it's a lot of pages, a lot of language, a lot of legal jargon, just to point out what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. And I would certainly invite Mr. Belvin and other members, the town's representatives, to the district to feel free to interject at any time. So our, the agreement you see before you will essentially create, get the district out of the trash business. Right now, as you know, between the landfill and the transfer station, the, the district has, runs those facilities and has actually, you know, more or less runs those situations and allows the, the, all of the towns involved to dispose of their trash for no cost and to run a recycling center at cost to the, to the users. By eliminating the district, I mean, by approving this, you take the district out of the trash and recycling business. They're merely a caretaker body that will preside over and administer any personnel liabilities and environmental liabilities now and into the future, but they're not actually dealing with trash and recycling anymore. A yes vote would also direct the assets that would be divided between Carver, Marion, and Wareham as they're set forth in the, in the agreement you see in the warrant. So you'll have to look for that in the warrant to see how those assets would be divided. A yes vote would also mean that residents would have to make provisions for their own trash and recycling disposal because, as I mentioned, the district will no longer be in the trash and recycling business and would no longer be essentially running a transfer station either. So that puts it in the hands of each resident, resident to deal with, whether it's private subscription, which is pretty much all you have left, if, if that's what you choose to do. But the district is out of that business. All three towns must approve this agreement in order for it to become effective. Marion has already done so. This is on our warrant tonight. As of right now, Wareham does not have it on their annual, their special town meeting warrant. That doesn't preclude them from holding another special town meeting before the end of the year. I'm ahead of myself. Marion has already voted to accept, and I mentioned Wareham is, they have a special town meeting coming up. They've deliberately, they've chosen not to put it on there. Now, one can draw a conclusion that is their intent not to agree to it, but I don't know that we can make that assumption to the extent that they have the ability to hold another special town meeting. They have time to do that. So a no vote, a no vote is either by, by an actual no vote or by default. If there isn't consensus in a three-town vote, yes vote, it essentially is a no vote. And the decisions have to be made by December 31st from all towns. So if Wareham doesn't take this up, they don't put it on their warrant, essentially, what all towns have done is, is vote no to amend the agreement. A no vote would also maintain a district that includes only the towns of Carver and Wareham. A no vote to this agreement means that the agreement that the district has with Marion would, would prevail. And in that dis, that agreement, the district, the remaining towns, actually allow Marion out of the district with certain provisions. So a no vote to the agreement means that the subsequent agreement by, among the board, the district board itself, would prevail. A no vote would also mean that the district could very well decide to stay in the trash and recycling business. Remember, if the town accepts it, they're a caretaker organization only. They're out of the business, and no vote allows the district, the reconfigured district with only Carver and Wareham to be in the business if they choose. So essentially, the district could decide in some fashion that they wanted to either provide some outlet for trash collection, reci, with recycling, whether it's curbside or whatever the case is, if you wanted to do that on a district basis, or to keep the transfer station open and find a way to run that operationally and financially. Again, a yes vote would more or less preclude that, a no vote would not preclude that. A no vote would, I've already done that, how about that? Okay. A no vote would also revise, the revised district could operate the landfill and could also make provisions for the Rochester Road Transfer Station, but it does not include the transfer station that's in Marion already, that's going to become Marion's property. If, a no vote allows for the provisions that were agreed to with the, between the district and Marion to prevail, the district has negotiated an agreement which has certain provisions. Essentially, the assets that are on, that have been, that are, that Marion has brought to the table all these years, and the, and the real estate and equipment, Marion has a, has a piece of that. Those assets that they have, they're willing, they're walking away from those assets if there's a no vote. They're also have the ability, what they're also be doing is shedding their liability for any instances or conditions up to the time of this vote. So any liabilities going forward, rather, they, are merely the, and the, I guess the district takes, has those to deal with, but not Marion. So they're leaving their assets on the table and shedding certain liabilities. And I get, so again, a yes vote means they're out of the business of trash and recycling. They're a caretaker district only. A no vote means that they're still in the, the trash business, but it's reduced down to Marion and, I'm sorry, Carver and Wareham only. So you'll have a different district board. They can, there's still an ability to, to offer and find ways to offer trash collection, recycling collection, and/or to keep a transfer station open. So I'm sure I missed a lot of detail. So again, I would defer to Bob or John or Bill, whomever feels the need to speak.
Thank you, Mr. LaFon. Mr. Belvin?
I guess that's where I take over. So, as a representative of the district, along with Bill Duggan here and John Carter over there, the three towns, Carver, Marion, and Wareham. Marion intends to leave the district. They took a vote already to leave the district. In that process, we were supposed to have negotiations with Marion, and it didn't happen until recently. Recently, the district and Marion came together with an agreement that they would leave the district, take over their Benson Brook Station that's in Marion, and they would run that as a transfer station for their Marion residents. They also, two pieces of equipment goes along with that. With this agreement, it also, their liability still is with the landfill that is in South Carver. Does not release the, the liability. They still part of the district in the sense of the liability if anything happens to the South Carver landfill. The district has an agreement with them to pay off all liabilities that we have for current employees, their health care, there's money in the account for it. By February, it should be somewhere around 1.6 million, somewhere around there, five. Then, the liabilities for health care and for retirement, somewhere around 500,000, they give or take a few. And then there's some other things that need to be paid off. So, when all's said and done, December 31st, the district will have at least a half a million dollars in the bank. Now, this article here was created prior to the agreement with Marion that the district formed. This was supposed to go back to the last town meeting, and it didn't get put on the articles. Right now, this article as written, basically will tell us if you want a transfer station or not because Wareham has, from what I know, has no intent to bring this article to their town meeting, meaning it's a moot point, the language in here. But the language is important because if we vote yes, there's still liability within the district if you vote this in. So if you vote yes, there's still liability with the landfill in South Carver. There's still liability with bonding. So if something happens to the landfill down in South Carver, say there's an environmental thing, we have a policy to protect us. Problem is, there's a $100,000 deductible that we have to pay out per occurrence. So if something happens and there's no money in this account, we drain everything here with the district if we do this, then they got to come back to us and ask us for that money. So you have to understand, there is still liability with this. It also still allows the district to bond money. But bonding money requires the district to come to the towns that are in the district and ask for those bonding to be done. If you guys say no, then the district can't bond it out. They have to come, go back, figure out a different way, and then come back again with something different. So there's still the option of bonding. So we still have that liability. When it comes down to this article here, it cuts the membership down from, right now, it's nine members. With Marion leaving, there's three members gone, it's down to six members. Three from Wareham, three from Carver. This agreement will drop it down to three members, but Marion's not going to be there, so now it's only two members. One from Carver, one from Wareham. And then a subsequent subcommittee of it, which would be the town administrators, will basically oversee what these two people will be doing with the district money. That's what this does. But like I said, it's kind of a moot point if Wareham doesn't complete this. What I'm looking for with this is to find out if you guys want a transfer station available to the residents or not. If you vote in favor of this, it's telling me, we don't want a transfer station for us. Go back to the district and say, we don't want a transfer station, we want out. Okay, we can't leave the district. There's always going to be a district because we have liability and there's money to be paid, and we still have to pay employee to oversee what's going on. All right, and that's about $1,000 a month, $1,200, all right, that we have to pay for this. So we still have an administrator, we'll have a couple of members to oversee what's going on and spending the money to pay all the bills for the South Carver landfill. Keep it, a no vote would turn around and give me that information to go back to the district and say, we want to keep the transfer station, we have to work toward it, all right, but you have to have the information. The plan is, over the past few months, that I have been working with Wareham and the town administrator, all right, is to try to find out how much is it going to cost the residents. The plan is, is $125 for a sticker fee. And there'd be either a bag program or a punch card where each punch is worth a certain amount of money, depending on how many bags you have or a barrel. That has yet to be determined. Our executive for the district is creating a budget. He hasn't done it because he was just authorized to do it at our last meeting that we had. So he's in the process of doing it. What I heard was the original, we were like 1.3, 1.4 million dollars, all right. Now, it, it could be closer to 1.1, 1.2 million to run the facility. And I think that also includes, and I'm not sure, I'm sorry, because I didn't ask the question, but looking at the numbers of how to run the facility is about 600,000, 500,000 to 600,000 to run the facility, and then the rest is to pay for all the trash to get rid of and the recyclables. Okay, trash, we have a negotiated agreement with Covanta that they're willing to agree to for a lower cost per ton than any other trash hauler that's going in there and dropping off at Covanta. So right there is a savings for us. And that was in, my feeling, is included in what this 1.1 to 1.2 million dollar budget proposed for the district. It's a lot of money, but spread out between Wareham and Carver and potentially Rochester, if they would want to get involved in it too, will help. It's going to really depend on how many people buy stickers to use the service. My feeling is, we do this for two years at tops.
Mr. Belvin?
Yes.
So we're getting into a conversation of what could happen theoretically.
Yes.
So I think we need to keep it on the, the motion at hand, which is, which is to, to vote on the language presented forth here. So it's getting a little confusing just for me, I'm sure for everybody else as well, too. I think we need to just speak to what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, but not what theoretically could happen if there were a no vote or if there were a yes vote, because that would require a whole lot of planning and a whole lot of other things that we'd have to do and bring forward to everybody at town meeting.
Well, there's really, if you look at the language, it's a moot point. If we look at the language, whether we vote yes or no, all right, Wareham's not going to put it on their town meeting agenda. All right, that's their intent. They didn't put it on, they've delayed their town meeting. So now it's the point that they have no intent of doing it, so it's a moot point.
Yeah, we just, we can't, we can't base it on intent. They could, they could have a town meeting if they wanted to. They could have a special town meeting, they have plenty of time. So I think we're misleading people. I think we just want to keep it to the facts. The facts are that they have not voted, they did not put it in their meeting, that their, 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 their most recent special town meeting. So let's try to keep it off the theoretical and on the facts at hand.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I just, this agreement, I don't think is... I just, this agreement, I don't think is good enough for our town. It's not in the best interest of our town. Keeping the district is the best option, and there's already an agreement with the district that's already set in place. This would supersede it. I just ask you to vote no for this.
Okay. Yes, sir, in the middle.
Hi, John Carter, 24, Johns Pond Road, also a district representative. I see your point on, you know, the what ifs. I'd like to go back to give a little bit of history as to what has already happened that actually happened with the district. I was asked to come on to the district back in 2017, when the town started getting assessed fees for usage at the district. It never happened before. The way this is set up is that CMAS pays more than 90% of all the expenses for the district. There should be really very little out-of-pocket costs coming out of the district itself. The CMAS also pays a dollar a ton for all the tonnage going in to the landfill. The minimum payment is $240,000. That's 240,000 tons of dollars that should've been going into an account for the district above and beyond the expenses. So the big question that the, the towns, three towns have asked, is what happened to the money? Came on board, there was no money in the account. We put the three town administrators in charge of trying to find out what happened, and the town accountant. Through their research, they found out that two people associated with the district had, I'm gonna use the term allegedly embezzled, between $600,000 and $800,000 from the district. Now, I'm looking for $2 million. If you've got 10 years' worth of deposits of $240,000 per the contract with CMAS, there should've been a large amount of money sitting there, so we wouldn't be here today. We would have $3 million sitting in the account. We could try test programs as much as we would want, because the money would be there, and we wouldn't have to depend on maybe taxpayers making up any assessments down the road. Now, what the district did from the very beginning was to look at, how do we run this thing? How do we provide a service? We brought in specialists from Mass DEP, that, the municipal assistance coordinator for the southeastern district, that said, yes, you can have a district, trash, recycling, composting, many other different services, but it's gonna cost you sticker fee, bag fee, and assessments to the town. It's a service that you provide, you will pay for that service. We took that into consideration, we actually went to hire a full-time district manager to come in, thinking that they knew trash, they could somehow show us how to maybe make money out of this, come to a break even. We would've been happy with losing a little bit of money. Break even would've been great, you'll never make money, but that never happened. Now, after the passage, one of the employees that was indicted passed away, and then the district attorney's office decided not to pursue any charges. We wanted to know why, but we would never give them the specific reasons as to why they start pursuing the individuals. So we went the route of going with this new district manager, Jeff Osuch, who's been doing a great job, working on a part-time basis. He's the one that went and started giving us financial information, tonnage information, so we could find out what's going on with the district, what are, what are our cost drivers, and where are the revenue, where's the revenue coming from? He put together a schedule back in July of 2019, using the peak volume of the district, to say that somewhere between 4,600 and 5,000 people use the district. If you take the cost of the district, the estimated cost, and I agree with Bob, it's somewhere between 1.2, 1.3 million dollars, you get to somewhere between 250 and 300 dollars a person. Now, $125 sticker fee is fine, but now people have to make up that difference with a bag fee, I believe, or punch card system, what Bob's referring to, to make up that money, or we, the taxpayers, are gonna pay the difference. So what this agreement does, getting back to your point, what this agreement does is, if the district ends, there's over, well over a million dollars, 1.5, whatever Bob was saying, it protects us from future liabilities. We have insurance policies in place with a $100,000 deductible. So neither Carver or Wareham, in Marion, won't really have to worry about dispersments of cash in the future. It's basically, it's completed, it's done, it sits there, you're still a member, but you don't have any cash exposure, and you're not gonna be worried about spending money down the road on it, it's over. Now, there's been a lot of, I guess, discussion between Wareham and Carver joining a district, becoming a district, or maybe some kind of municipal agreement that was in play. The question no one's been able to answer is, should it not work? Should we decide after a year or two that we want out? Can we? We're already seeing that. All the towns have to agree. If Wareham doesn't want out, we're in. If we want to, if Wareham wants out, we wanna stay in, you're in. You have to have a majority vote, we're gonna be 3 and 3 if two towns split, so there's no, no clear way to get out of the district. Final point being, we still have the North Carver Water District, costs us $250,000 a year, every single year, till, we don't even know when it's gonna end. I firmly believe that if we keep this district open, Wareham will probably be controlling Carver's future, 'cause I don't see them ever getting out of the district. They've got over, half their popul, half their households use the district, they need it, and they'll always stay in it. So the question is, if what Bob thinks down the road, two years that we can get out, how do we get out? I don't think there's a way. We'll be sitting there in the district for many, many years to come, paying assessments. I would encourage you to vote yes on this agreement. And I do disagree that if Marion voted in and Carver votes it in, Wareham is, does not have it on their town meeting warrant, but they could change their mind if they see the direction the towns are going in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Belvin?
So with, to go with John, I agree with what he says to some point. By not having an exit agreement, this agreement here that you're voting on is a change from the existing agreement that we already have within the district. With Marion leaving the district, it just is Carver and Wareham. We still need to have another agreement between us two towns, which will address, how does Carver leave, or how does Wareham leave, in the sense if we don't wanna be part of an assessment to a town, that would have to be negotiated upon. So no matter what, there's gonna be another agreement coming after January 1st. There has to be. Whether you vote this in or not, there's gonna have to be another agreement created. All right? So I still say, vote this down, okay? There will be another agreement, no matter what, with just the two towns.
So, sorry, John Carter.
We have someone else who hasn't spoken yet, so I'm gonna go to them first.
Dave Robertson, 38, South Main Street. I wished I hadn't stand up, John. I'd like to hear your voice. What I'd like to say is, I was on the district, on the board with John during that troublesome time, and it was a time of deception, and a time of, we didn't know what was going on, and there was money missing, and what I'm hearing is the same thing. I don't hear numbers. I don't hear facts, a business plan, I don't hear a model. I don't hear anything that says, these are the numbers, and this is what's best for the town of Carver. In my opinion, I think we should cut our, shortcut our losses now and vote yes on this.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Yes, sir.
I, obviously, this is a very complicated thing. Every time I hear it, I, my mind goes boggling. My mind always goes to the simpler path, keep it simple. And what we presented with here, voting yes, is keeping it simple. Get out of the district and then deal with it afterwards.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, if that could?
Yes, sir.
Adam Holmes, 13, Red Tail Lane. So what I've struggled with since day one, when this issue first came to us as a member of FinCom and as a resident, is the idea that, as currently constituted, the district consists of nine individuals who have unilateral control of what happens with this transfer station and with the district. Independent of what we vote tonight, tonight's vote is essentially a symbolic vote, and it sends a clear message to our representation, what we as a body, as a town meeting body, choose to do going forward with this transfer station. They can, after this meeting, elect to do what they want as a nine-member district. We do not have control over what they do. This vote is about sending a symbolic message to our representation about what we, as taxpayers, are comfortable doing. For me, this issue boils down to risk. Where the risk currently lies, what our realistic proposition is in front of us to fund a transfer station or operate a transfer station as of January 1st, which as we sit here tonight, is not known. It's unascertainable at this point. We do not know, we have a rough budget, we do not know how it's gonna be funded, we do not have a funding mechanism in place, one does not exist. If the district decides to assess us a $500,000 assessment on June 30th of next year, we have absolutely no way to pay it. It doesn't exist, as we sit here tonight. So this vote sends a symbolic message to our representation that we are not comfortable with that risk, and we would ask that representation to go to the district meetings and vote on our behalf at those district meetings. Again, if the representation goes to those district meetings and votes how they see fit, they can vote to change the vote and open the transfer station again on January 1, and start operations all over again, without a funding mechanism in place, and then come back to the town at some later date and assess us a fee to run that transfer station. I have yet, in eight months dissecting this information, to hear a single taxpayer in this town say that they don't want a transfer station. Every single taxpayer likes the luxury and the privilege and the opportunity to utilize a transfer station. The fact of the matter is, not everybody utilizes it, not everybody wants to pay for everyone else to utilize it, and there is not a funding mechanism in place to ensure that only those that use the transfer station will pay for the transfer station. It doesn't exist. Sticker fees have been anywhere from $10 to $50 in recent memory. We've sold about 1,500 stickers on an annual basis. That number's under debate, but let's say roughly 1,500 stickers at $50 or $10 each. Now we think we're gonna be able to fund a transfer station on a, on a 150 or 125 or $250 sticker price? It, it's not conceivable to me, considering the fact that we sold nowhere, the price wasn't anywhere near that high, and we only sold 1,500 stickers. So just to bring it back to my original point, a yes vote on this article sends a clear message to our representation, what we, as a body, choose to do going forward with this transfer station to limit our risk. We are completely exposed right now to enter into an agreement with Wareham. If one of our representatives, and the three representatives from Wareham, wanna move forward with opening and operating a transfer station on January 2nd, they can do that. And that's too much risk. I'm not comfortable with that risk, neither is the FinCom. I don't speak on behalf of the FinCom, but they took this, they took a vote on this article back in February. It was a unanimous vote, then 9 to 0. We voted again tonight, and it was, even though it's, it's not on the warrant that we have a say on this particular article, we took it under consideration and again approved it unanimously 6 to 0. So as a resident and as a member of FinCom, I'm asking you to vote yes for this article.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Belvin?
So to be truthful here, is that a few months ago, a district, we had a meeting, and not even on the agenda, was closing the transfer station. It wasn't even on the agenda. There was a mention of transfer stations or whatnot, but not one of the members from Wareham or Carver, as far as I know, knew that we were actually there to vote to close the transfer station, blindsided by a motion by Marion to close the transfer station. That vote came down, nine members, five, the three from Marion, and the two from Carver, voted to close the transfer station. Not one of them came to town meeting and asked you to vote on it, not one. Okay? I asked to have this put on the agenda of our warrant article, 'cause I want you to have a vote. This is your opportunity to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Mr. Jermaine?
I'm not gonna go over everything that Adam said. The bottom line with what Bob just said is that the two members that voted to close the transfer station out of a three-member committee, we all know that Bob voted to keep it open. So take Marion out of the equation, and now the three members from Wareham want it, Bob wants it, the two members from this town, it doesn't really matter. Now, everybody wants a transfer station. No one's arguing that point, no one has ever argued that point. But Adam's 100% right, so isn't Dave Robertson. All we have ever heard as a finance committee, and as the bulk of the body that has read Facebook and everything else, is should-be's, would-be's, maybe if this goes right, if it snows on Tuesday, if everything goes perfect. Well, I bought a dump sticker last year, I've never stepped foot in the transfer station, 'cause it was also a parking permit. So we don't know how many of those are gonna get sold, and of course, those will go away once they're $125 a piece, it'll be solely for the dump or the transfer station, and you can pay another $10 or $20 to have the privilege to park at Sampson's Pond or one of the beaches. But that's the reason I bought one last year, 'cause they were 10 bucks, and I've got a couple of kids that like to use kayaks. So it made sense, no big deal. I didn't have to go to the transfer station, I have trash pickup. We just don't know, this, I, I don't wanna see this as a finance committee, and, and we feel that we need to tell you this, we don't want this to turn into another North Carver Water District. And this has all the ingredients to be exactly that. And Adam's 100% right, it doesn't matter what we do here tonight, 'cause all this does is send a yes or no. We tried that a year ago with a single trash hauler, we all voted no, and they put an RFP out for one anyway. So it doesn't really matter what this body says, as far as this is concerned tonight. They can go out tomorrow and do whatever they wanna do anyway, and we're on the hook for it. I would urge you all to vote yes, and close the transfer station and try to find a better way to do this, 'cause I believe that there is one.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. You've already spoken twice.
Well, I, as one of the members that brought this forward, I have the right to speak.
How so?
For the fourth time?
You, we had three, he had a presentation and then two.
My character's been questioned by, by members here, and I'd like to respond to that.
Well, first of all, so, Mr. Jermaine, I'll just put you on notice that you should not be bringing up other people's names and bringing them into the conversation.
This has been a vote, this has been a process made in public.
You should not, yeah, so then everybody should be aware of that, but you should not make another person's part of your point. So hopefully that suffices, Mr. Belvin, but...
No, because I have said this to numerous people, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. My integrity's been questioned here. And what I have told to other people is, what you guys tell me to do here is what I will bring back to the district. If you vote yes for this, I will go back to the district and tell them that we approved this agreement, and now we need to get out of the district and we move forward with that. If you vote no, I go back to the district and says, we wanna keep the transfer station open. Okay? What you guys tell me to do, I will do. Okay? And I wanna make sure that I've told people this numerous times. So I will not have my integrity questioned.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Oh, over on the right.
Jason Greeno, 11 Main, I move to call the question.
Can I say something?
We still have someone? Yep.
All right.
Is this new information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, okay, so, in my opinion, we should vote no to keep it open, because progress is being made to figure out if we can do it. At the last few select board meetings, every time Bob comes back with a little more, a little more, a little more.
Again, please don't address another individual.
Okay, my bad. We learn at our meetings that more and more is being done, and we still have 11 weeks until January 1st to get more done. And a lot can be done in 11 weeks if you really, really care about it. So the hypotheticals, what if we don't know, there's still time for there. Anyone can hire a private hauler at any time, you can do it today, tomorrow, December 31st. But voting yes to close the district in its current form is forcing everyone to get a hauler, even the people who wanna, you know, hold out for the chance that something does come to fruition. So even if the transfer station isn't up and running in a new agreement on January 1st, but progress is being made, maybe someone only has to get a short-term private hauler. And if the district isn't operating, then it's not like it's accruing extra costs, like employees and tipping fees and stuff. So it's not like we're running up the credit card. So voting no and keeping the district intact kinda says that we wanna give ourselves as much time as possible and use our resources to try to keep a transfer station open. You know, why do we wanna give up before we have to? We've got 11 more weeks to try to figure something out. So I would ask that you vote no. I'm done now.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to reiterate that we had a nine-member board. We hired consultants that specialize in landfill management. We spent three years looking at this, and for someone to say in 11 weeks we can get it fixed, I find it highly doubtful. So I think that you're dealing in what if... So, I think that you're dealing in what-ifs, maybes, what can happen, when we know what's happened, and we know the potential for our tax assessments going forward, and how the town of Carver could get exposed to additional spending. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Do we have a point of order, or is it further debate?
It's further information.
Okay, you've already had your opportunity. We've got someone on the aisle.
Bill Harriman, 55 Home Street, West Carver. Just a simple question, I guess. If we vote yes on this tonight, it's a very complex issue, we vote yes on this tonight, is there a chance that we could work a deal with Wareham when they take over this transfer station, and be a subscriber to their system, as opposed to taking all the liability and issues that go along with running the transfer station? That's a, seems like a fairly simple question. Have we considered the fact of being a subscriber for Wareham if they, in fact, start a transfer station in that same location?
Do we have anyone who can answer that?
Sure. You could strike a deal with Middleborough if you want, whatever town will allow you to do it, they'll take the check.
The chair has not recognized you, Mr. Jermaine.
Sorry.
So, are you saying that you, so, you're saying you want to answer this question?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. I was reading the budget that was just presented to me by the district.
Okay. Sir, can you please repeat your question, Mr. Belvin did not hear it.
Yes. My question is, I'm a fan of the transfer station, obviously, I've always had a thing about curbside pickup that I find objectionable. Is there a way that we can get out, vote yes on this, get out of the district, Wareham supposedly is going to run a transfer station there, can we not hook up with Wareham, but be a subscriber to Wareham's system? In other words, they would charge us so much, probably more than they would charge their residents, but we would pay that fee, they might make a couple of bucks on Carver, but at least we'd still have a transfer station without all the issues, the liability, the expenses. Does that...
I'm not sure if we've ascertained that Wareham intends to continue to run the district.
Well, okay, that's a hypothetical.
It is a hypothetical, so we're getting really deep in the weeds here in hypotheticals.
Sorry, I would just state that...
Sir, you've already had two opportunities to speak, so is a question, or...
It was an answer to your question that came up about what could happen if Wareham and Carver decided to do some kind of municipal agreement. That would be outside the district, so I would say that it's a possibility to that gentleman's question.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, to answer a question, ma'am.
Mr. Jermaine, yes.
The, this would be the same thing that the former town administrator mentioned to us a year ago, that we could go, that an arrangement was being made to go to the exit three landfill for Plymouth, and it would be a, I think it was a $250 fee for a sticker to go there, but there were no bag fees and so forth. So, yeah, any town can enter into a separate municipal agreement with any other town, I'm not sure that Wareham would be so inclined to, but we certainly could attempt that. There's nothing stopping it.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, that was not correct.
Why isn't it not correct?
Okay, you guys cannot have a conversation with each other.
Well, that's why I did the point of order to you.
So, the point of order would be procedural in nature, so do you have something that's procedural in nature?
Well, the procedure is, is that if somebody has incorrect information, you want to clarify it.
I don't, I mean, there's been a lot of hearsay, and there's been a lot of conjecture already, so it is what it is at this point. So, we have a motion on the floor to move the question.
Mr. Moderator?
Who's?
Right here, right.
Yep. Do you have new information?
New information, right.
Okay.
Recently, I've gone to some of these district meetings, and I asked a pretty simple question. What would happen if nothing is done as of today? Meaning, this vote, like Bob had said, this vote really doesn't mean much, but like Mr. Holmes said, it is symbolic. But I said, what if nothing happened? And the director told me, as of January 2nd, that the transfer station would be locked up, and nobody could dispose of their trash. The district itself would still be open as a caretaker, I believe is the term that was used, and John and Bob correct me if I'm wrong, to run the policies and the insurance and that type of thing. So, my question was, was, again, if nothing happens, so what does that mean? There is no trash. So, basically, the district at their next meeting has to either rescind the vote that was taken, because as mentioned a couple times, nine people voted five to four to close the district for the trash. That's how it stands as of right now. At the next meeting on October 28th, they basically have to vote to rescind that. So, I know, because I've been getting a lot of questions through texting and messaging and things like that, it's very confusing. So, as it stands right now, effective December 31st, the transfer station closes, meaning there's no place to bring your trash. So, what we're trying to do is decide whether the town wants to investigate opening up the transfer station again. Though it might not be on January 2nd, it really depends how long it takes to get the personnel, the equipment, there's going to be some new equipment needed, things like that. The major point that personally I feel is bad is, we don't have an exact fee. People have paid anywhere from $10 to $50 for a sticker, now it's going to be minimum of $125, could be up to $200, plus a bag fee or a punch ticket. So, that could be another $300 to $400, nobody knows. Again, I'm not speaking of conjecture, because we don't want to do that, but there is no concrete number. That's what has me scared and nervous, and that's why I'm going to vote yes on this.
Okay.
But again, I just tried to bring up some questions that hopefully...
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'll just remind everybody that this is not a court of law, so we're not here to determine truth or whether something's true or not. So, if someone says something that's not true, it's up to you guys to determine that in the audience. We're not going to go back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth on. I'm going to take one more, but it better be new.
Thank you very much. I had two thoughts on this, actually. I've spoken to Bob about this a few times. The town of Wareham, of course, they want to keep this open, their population, their normal population 10 years ago was 21,000 people, we're 11,000. Their summer population almost doubles, all right, so we're helping subsidize their trash disposal. I like the transfer station, I go there once in a while, I think we should have a transfer station, but I agree with Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Carter, that the price, the cost to the taxpayers being an unsure figure, an unknown figure, I think is dangerous, because if we don't sell, as far as I can tell from hearing what everyone's speaking about, if we don't sell enough stickers, we are going to be assessed, all the property taxpayers are going to be assessed with another tax on our property taxes to keep this open. So, everyone should know that before, on how you want to vote tonight. That's all. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing as this has gone fully around in circles, we're going...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
What's the point of order?
Point, we have not the audience, we have a governing body in this town. Should we have a meeting, correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's not a show.
Right. I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so seeing no further conversation, we're going to move the question. So, on the proposed motion, on Article 5, to approve as set forth in the warrant, requires a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Passes by majority vote.
Ball for him, please.
Say again?
You have a count of hands?
You asking for a hand count? What's that? Yeah, we need seven people to rise to a hand count.
Seven people need to rise in order to do a hand count.
Okay. We have more than seven? Okay. So, we're going to take another vote, we're going to vote by hand count, so when I say all those in favor, kindly raise your card up in the air. Hold it in the air for as long as you can, until we are able to count all the hands, and then we'll let you know that you can lower your hand, and then I'll ask for the no's, and the no's shall do the same. So, all those in favor? Keep those hands up. Okay, you can lower them. Our vote counters ready? So, the motion passes by majority vote. We had 40 no, and 51 yes?
51.
Moving on to Article 6, deed restriction and then transfer tax title parcels to Conservation Commission. This motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. The recommendation by the select board was five to zero. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 6, as set forth on the screen in front of us.
Second.
Motion is made, seconded, so I failed to point out that the motion on the screen is different than the motion that is in your warrant, so that's why we provided it for you here. Yep, it's in the handout, so...
Would you like me to read the motion, Mr. Moderator?
If you'd like, since there is a difference, I think that might be worthwhile, and I know you have a presentation as well, so you can feel free to...
Thank you, yes. I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of two town-owned parcels currently classified as tax title property, shown on Assessors Map 42A as Lot 73, known as recreation area, and as Lot 74, known as picnic aisle, and also shown on Plan Record in Plan Book 14, page 359, on file at Plymouth County of Registry of Deeds, to the Select Board, I did change the wording there from Board of Selectmen, and authorize the Select Board to convey a conservation restriction on such terms and conditions as are deemed appropriate, to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game, said conservation restriction to require permanent access by the general public on said parcels for fishing, boating, and other passive recreation activities in perpetuity, and subsequent to the conveyance of said conservation restriction, to transfer the care, custody, and control of the two above-named parcels to the Conservation Commission in perpetuity, and to record a formal designation of Article 97 protection by the town in said Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If I may, just keep this real brief, the explanation here of this article is, goes back quite a ways, maybe a year and a half, two years, a large number of residents got together, they wanted to protect their pond and the small recreation area that serves as currently their beach, and they talked to a representative of Massachusetts Fish and Game, who also is very interested in this, obviously. Wenham Pond is a really great fishing pond, and apparently a great boating pond, too. And so, lots of discussion back and forth, the residents, and the representative from Fish and Game came to the Select Board. This was prior to the spring, quite a while back, maybe the fall, and there were a lot of residents there, I believe of the 70, roughly 75 homes there, about half the residents were present, and said this is what they want. And they also understand, put a conservation restriction on this parcel, it sounds like a bad word, all it means is you can't build a house lot on it, essentially. It stays in the use that it has now, it will be open to the general public. I doubt, you know, people from Boston are going to be coming down to use it, they could probably do that anyway at this point, but it protects that parcel and the pond in perpetuity. The reason we had to reverse the order of this, from what you see in your warrant, is that according to Fish and Game, it was very important to them to make sure that it went into a conservation restriction first, and then subsequently, we will hopefully give it to the care and custody of our Conservation Commission. In doing it in that order, it gives it what's called Article 97 protection, and that simply means that it's a permanent protection that can only be dissolved by an act of the legislature. So, it's a pretty, it's a pretty permanent protection.
Thank you, Miss Yoo.
Thank you.
We'll open up for debate. Seeing no movement to the mics, on Article 6, which requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously.
I'll have to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, everybody, have a wonderful evening, we really appreciate you coming out tonight, and stay well, we wish the best for everybody.